Time today, it's good.
No, no. We're on TV right now, what are you doing? Shut the door. All right, you ready? We're live, all right. I'd like to call to order the Radcliffe City Council work session from Monday, August 10th at 5:00 PM here at Radcliffe City Hall. If you will please rise as our city clerk, Asher Russo, gives our invocation and remains standing for a pledge.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the blessings that you bestowed upon us. Father, we're thankful for each council member here tonight, as well as our mayor and those of the department heads and the city members and citizens that are here. Father, we pray that they make decisions that are in the best interest of this city and bless us and guide us as we go through our days. Father, we bless those that are in the midst of this pandemic and are dealing with sickness and those that are dealing with financial burdens. And Father, we pray for our businesses that are struggling right now. Father, keep us safe, bless those that are fighting for our freedoms both here and overseas. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to welcome our council members and some people that we have here in our council chambers and those watching on Facebook. I especially like to extend a very warm welcome to a former councilman that's joining us. I believe 28 years if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Donnie Councilman, Donnie Yates, thank you for joining us. You're looking, you're looking dapper. So thank you for being here, we appreciate you. You're coming out and spending some time with us, Donnie. Well, wanted to get started, I just want to add at the end of this, I've got a couple of things, I've had to add on the agenda. Kind of came in late Friday, I had left early Friday afternoon and our finance director and our city clerk, myself and our stormwater department had been working through. And so I'm going to add that on the agenda at the end, which is the stormwater project funding. You all should have a copy of what we're going to discuss, not to put it on you all late, but it is a discussion and just need to get it on the meeting so we didn't have to have another meeting to discuss it. So at this time, we're going to move into our work session discussion item. This is going to be from Mr. Fox, do you want to come sit down there in the front there? Chance is going to discuss the appropriations and funding for the budget this year, so Chance, I'm going to turn it over to you. Is that Mike? Yeah, you can go ahead, Chance.
You're talking about the item on the agenda regarding the amendment to the...
Yes, estimated revenues, appropriations, the amendment of fiscal year 2019 to 2020.
So, yeah, this is something that is a matter of procedure that we do each year. After we close out the books or sometime they're closed, as we close out our books each year around June 30th, we typically review the budget, actual expenditures in relation to how the council adopted the budget ordinance for 1920. So after we close the books on July the 10th for the close of the fiscal year, all the departments came in in alignment with their budget, I mean, or they came in under budget. There was one department, which is the Economic Development Planning and Building Department, there was a budget of $451,500. The actual expenses came in around $468,500, so only about $17,000. Most of that is going to be attributed to the Commonwealth Economic Study that was done that the council, as you all know aware of, there was ongoing expenses for that and a commitment to them for that project. It is still ongoing, you know, as of now, but those expenses came in a little higher than we first set the budget for. But outside of that, from an expenditure standpoint, you know, all the departments came in under budget, which is a good thing. And I'll just add, so really that, as far as the ordinance goes, that is really the only change. And the offset for that additional expenditure on the revenue side is just going to be amended by insurance premium taxes, that same $17,000 difference. Insurance premium tax came in at about $118,000 higher than we budgeted, we budgeted $3.025 million. And insurance taxes, they came in $118,000 above that, so we would use those additional increases there to offset the cost of the planning. I could have also reduced some of the departmental expenses to offset the change in planning, it really doesn't matter. The bottom line, I mean, after we all said that, there was some savings to the city that, as a result of our expenses being lower. So that's the basis of the ordinance. I will mention, just as a side note, that, you know, there was some discussion we had at budget time about occupational tax and as a result of local shutdowns, you know, for the economy back in the March, April, May timeframe. And we put together the 2021 budget, we may not necessarily know how payroll taxes would come in, how business license fees would come in. Some of that comes in quarterly. And I will say that on the business license receipt side, which is one of the categories that, you know, we could talk about economic impact as a result of the pandemic. So, you know, we budgeted about $1.1 billion and we took in $913,000, so it was about a $186,000 shortfall. And in most cases, our business license almost always comes in or above what we budgeted. So we can attribute, you know, about a $185,000 loss on business license. The occupational, and that's something that was expected, so that's, you know, nothing new here. I just wanted to share that with you in case, because we did talk about it at budget time for the new budget. The other one I just want to mention is occupational tax, your two and a quarter payroll withholding. We came, we budgeted $4 million and we took in $3,930,000. So actually, we only came shy about $70,000, which actually was pretty good. I had expected it to be a lot lower than that. So we'll see how this first quarter of receipts come in beginning July 1st to see, that would be another indicator on how things are playing out maybe for the next year. But it was good news that, from a revenue standpoint, that our impact for that quarter was only about $70,000, so I at least didn't want to add that. But back to the basis of the ordinance, we're just looking at an amendment for $17,000 for the one department.
So, I wanted to also, well, do you have any questions for Chance in reference to that amendment or budget? Okay, if not, I wanted to, why Chance is still here. So part of what we'll discuss as far as the stormwater funding project, I had to add Chance, and this is something that he and I worked on this afternoon. So went back and looked from 18, 19 to 20, you all should have that sheet. I only gave you 19 and 20, but just to give you a form, a frame of reference, this is the reserve general fund budget, you all should have a sheet. That's it, yep. So in 18, excuse me, in 18, we were at about 3.7, I think it was 3.77 million in reserves. In 19, we ended at 4.22, and then you'll see at 20, the ending of June 30th, 20, you'll see that we're at 4.92, almost 4.3, close to 4.3 million. Sorry, phone ringing. Cash on hand, as far as that goes, we went from 2.99 to 4.24, nearly $425,000 on cash on hand, which is an additional about $125,000 difference in those two years. And so while we, I want to continue to work on that reserve, as Chance said, we put about $800,000 in, and I'm only going back into two years I've been here. We put $400,000 in reserves and then additional $400,000 in the pension reserve fund. And so that obligation that we had discussed is being met. So with that $425,000, that still gives us some leeway to work off of without touching reserves or going into reserves. Couple of the projects we're going to discuss potentially could touch that. And keep it in mind that we still are going to repair the chamber roof, that money still would come out of that fund, the cash on hand fund. And so I just want to make sure that the council knows that's where we're at, that's how much money. And then, of course, I gave you the breakdown of the CDs and the money market account that shows what those are. So if there's any questions on that, why Chance is, you know, Chance will probably stick around just for a second when we talk about the stormwater project. But is there any other questions on the reserve fund or the money that's available? All right, so Chance, if you just want to hang out for a minute? All right, I think Chief, are you out there? Next is our police chief. We have a procedure that we need to change, policy and procedure. This has to do with adding to our policies and procedures at the department.
I'm sorry, it's a brand new one.
Yeah, it's a new one, it's adding to what we currently have, and that's the duty to intervene, and so Chief, I'll turn it over to you.
This policy is brand new, it comes to us from KLC, KACP's approval that... And it basically reinforces our code, our ethics and code of conduct policy. And it says that, it's in writing, that we're going to do the right thing in the event that an officer is out here and he's developed tunnel vision, his adrenaline's pumping, and that officer is taking action in his use of force. And that could be verbal as well as physical, and somebody else recognizes, hey, you're stepping over that line. Now, these officers were given, even think common sense comes into play under your code of ethics and your code of conduct, as it should. This kind of gives them something, especially for the young people that might be in fear of... Yes, if it involves a supervisor, am I going to get in trouble throwing it in my mouth and turning in a supervisor? No fear of retaliation for that. If our guys are doing wrong, call them out on it. And this gives them some teeth to act with, and it does against those incidents when we do that too. So we'll have a record of that and be able to investigate properly, learn to build rights if someone's stepping over the line there and we need to take action, so. And like I said, the young and experienced officers that may be in fear of taking action, to take appropriate action, it kind of gives them some backing that, hey, it's okay to do this, this is the right thing to do.
Barbara, Councilwoman, if you don't mind, will you grab your mic and talk, please?
Sorry, Chief, on VB where it says the officers must notify their supervisor immediately, that means right then immediately, right?
That's correct.
Not once you get back to the station, but so the action can be stopped at that point?
That's correct, well, the officer can take action to stop it, but once they've taken action to stop that, now it's their duty to report this. They have to report it to their chain of command, to their supervisor. And if it's actually a supervisor that they're intervening against, they'll have to take that up to their next level of chain of command. And immediately, yes, they call them in immediately, but then they'll follow up with a written report.
Any questions, Paul?
Hey Chief, you probably think this particular policy is showing sign of leadership. I appreciate you being very intentional and being very explicit, but there's no question.
Another thing that we're working on right now, we'll probably have that, I'm addressing that with a directive, we'll have that done probably by the end of the week, and you'll have that typed out, is under our use of force policy, which kind of goes along with this, in addressing the use of chokeholds, the non-use of chokeholds. The academy doesn't train any airway obstructions, just for everybody's knowledge, we've never done that. And we've never utilized those tactics unless it was in a lethal force situation where you're justified using lethal force. And we all know that, and we've all trained on that, but we are putting together some wording that Kentucky League of Cities, that they've come out with now, and we'll implement that into that policy through a directive, so it will, we'll have it explained in writing, so anybody can pick it up and understand.
That too is going to have some very explicit language there.
Councilman, we do, grab the mic, people are saying they can't hear.
That too is going to have some very explicit language around, no chokeholds allowed.
Clear direction to it, be clear direction.
Chief, did you say anything about the, I know you didn't introduce it, but did you say anything about profiling policy?
No, I haven't, I didn't, no. We do have a profiling policy, we've had one for several years, and once again, that is explained very well. I had a conversation with Pastor Palmer in reference to that recently. I gave them a copy of that, and I wanted everyone to know that a lot of these things that are being addressed in the executive order that's been issued by the president, the, and I spoke about this at the Rotary Club meeting in Elizabeth Town a couple of weeks ago. The state of Kentucky is way ahead of a lot of places in its training and our policies and what the academy trains on than a lot of other places around this country. A little old Kentucky, by the way, is recognized, the DLCJT is probably by far the best academy in the nation. And their Kentucky Law Enforcement Council are way ahead of the game when it comes to all these things that are addressed in this executive order that's been issued down. And, you know, proud to be in this state, working in the Commonwealth for law enforcement in a manner in which we've all been trained.
Make any questions for Chief? Follow up? All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Up next, so for the past few months, of course, with everything going on with the social distancing, we've had, we haven't had much activity as far as zone maps and maps. The planning commission hasn't been meeting, but up until recently, last month, we started getting back to our normal routine and trying to get the meetings going. And so this is a zone map, map, or, excuse me, Murray, if you'll come up, we have a zone map amendment. Trying to get back in the swing of things, getting development going again, and I think we had a public hearing that we worked through, so. Murray, I'll turn it over to you and let you, and then Council, if you'll just keep in mind, some people are just saying, just when you speak or have a question, if you wouldn't mind grabbing your mic. I know it's kind of a routine thing we're not used to, but that way they can hear you at home. All right, Murray.
Okay, so just as the mayor described, we had a public hearing before the planning commission recently. And Wayne Lacy is requesting a zone map amendment for the property at 283 West Spring Street. And that property is known by PB, case number 160-10501016. It's just off the corner of Wilson and Spring Street. If you were heading south on Wilson, it would be on the right. The property is currently zone R6 or R7, and they're looking to go to an R6 zone classification. It's 1.318 acres in size, there's currently two apartment buildings on the property. The R7 zone is for manufactured homes, the R6 is for multifamily dwellings. So the proposed zone classification is more appropriate than the existing. The existing zone classification would have the property in a non-conforming state due to the fact that there's current multifamily dwellings on the property and not manufactured housing, so this would make it more conforming to the zoning ordinance to amend the zone map. And the planning commission has recommended approval of the zone map amendment from R7 to R6.
Any questions? Murray, next, only Murray, you got a subdivision acceptance, this is by John and Lydia Drexler, Drexler Park. That's, those that know where that is, that's down almost on the outskirts where City Limits just passed where Papa John's, there's a basketball office is, just before you, Janet Teen Building is right next to it, so.
Okay, so as the mayor was describing, John and Lydia Drexler have requested acceptance of the subdivision and the infrastructure, the public infrastructure within the subdivision. Now, Drexler Business Park Lot 9 is simply a portion of the subdivision off of Warwick Circle. And the only public improvements back there are one public street being Warwick Circle, and there's an attached map with your packet there. And then there's also some drainage infrastructure there, a couple of catch basins, some piping that goes to the main detention basin, which is closer out toward Dixie. If you've looked at the property from US 31W, there's a big looping street that comes off of Dixie. And in that undeveloped area there, where it falls off, there's a guardrail, there's a low area where the detention is. So they had a couple of catch basins that were piping underneath Drexler Circle out through a head hole into the detention basin. But really, for the most part, a big portion of the acceptance for public infrastructure is that Warwick Circle. It's about 330-foot road, very short. And they've got apartments back there, so they have multifamily dwellings.
Any questions for Murray?
Yeah, yeah, they put the top coat on, not that long ago, went out and looked at it, it's in great condition, smooth as glass.
Do you have some ways to fix the drainage?
No, I went out and looked, it's intact, everything, all the boxes, the piping, this is the plan show, so everything looks okay.
Anything else for Murray? All right, thank you, Murray.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, next, like I said at the beginning of the meeting, I wanted to go over, this has kind of been a, a, a lot of stuff, kind of moving parts with this, and didn't know Friday if we'd get everything complete, so I'm going to kind of talk a little bit about what we do have and the knowledge that we have on the project. I gave you all, and I know Councilman, you kind of came in a few minutes after, but that sheet there is a kind of an overall summary, I'm getting ready to share. You all have the one from me, this is just going over our stormwater current projects. And so the reason for this is the discussion of the tunnel underneath 31W that we've been working on for the past few months. So I just want to kind of go over this, so currently, there's about $398,500 in the Stormwater Reserve Utility Fund. Now, keep in mind, that was up to Chance about nearly a million at one time, but then those basins that we did on the south end of town, that match that we had to have really ate most of that up, and of course, that's what we have left. The projects that we have that are coming up, the 31W Tunnel Grant, the Lockston Parkway Rose Creek, that's been ongoing now for Mike. It's probably been back in Sheila's day, we were discussing that, so this is...
Many years.
Yeah, ongoing project, we've done several things on our end, on our side, there's still a basin project, and I'll get into that here in a few minutes. And then, of course, the North Lockston Mitigation Project, the FEMA, which is in the current process of the archaeological study. And so I gave you a breakdown of what we currently know when it comes to the tunnel grant. Now, the tunnel grant is the one that goes under 31W that's going to connect South Wilson Road to Centennial Side, just so those watching at home are clear what we're talking about. Now, this was a grant that you all approved prior to me coming in, but initially, we discussed it and I signed it, I think, back in June, that's somewhere in there to move forward. And so at that time, we had thought the tunnel grant would be about $104,000, that's what the initial council approved prior to 2019. All total, if you, as you can read there, with the increases that we had discussed, the estimated cost of engineering being a little bit higher, and then the contingency fund, our total match for that now is at $159,900, that's on the high end. Now, we hope that that would come in a little bit less, but I'd rather give you the high estimate now and come in under than give you a low estimate and come in too high. This is based on the 20% match and the estimated construction cost, which I won't mention because I don't want to put what we anticipate the bid numbers are going to be. So the design fee and inspections could be as high as the 32, and that's to have the engineering firm, and of course, this doesn't include the cameras, the gate, and the lighting, which upon quotes could be as high as $70,000. Now, we anticipate we can get those done maybe a lot cheaper, but again, I want to make sure I just give you full numbers and then we'll try to get those numbers down. Hopefully, those numbers can come down with some of that work being done in-house. The Rose Creek Lockston Parkway Project, we're, we've just completed, nearly completed the design on that. And if we bid that out, it would be a lot higher, we think we can, estimated cost, if we did that in-house with our own guys and our own equipment, we would only be at around $150,000. We would have an additional cost to buy a portion of the cemetery acreage, which before Toby left, had an appraisal done, and I have that appraisal. The number's not drastically high, but I'd rather not mention that right now until we have negotiations with our property owner. And then, of course, the match, based on the knowledge that we have currently with what the FEMA has estimated at, that project match could be nearly $400,000. So that alone on the North Lockston Parkway Mitigation Project really would eat up the majority of the reserve that we have currently in stormwater. Then, the other thing we had discussed, this discussed back in February was the last time we had a serious talk about this. That would be the increase in the stormwater billing fee, that's going to be assessed with Hardin County Water. I think currently, they bill us about $49,000, I believe, is what we're looking at, and I think the increase is going to look like about $33,000. And so that total number is going to be 82.5. So, so that gives you a synopsis of what we're looking at when it comes to the stormwater side of it, and that's kind of what's going to lead me into why we need to have this discussion. We already know the tunnel grant at the high-end match is going to be $159,000. We know that the Rose Creek Project, which is predicting at least, I'd say, within the next, within this next year, is 150,000. And we know that we're $400,000 when it comes to the mitigation project for the North Lockston Project. So you're already at 600, almost 700,000, I'm, I'm, I'm masquerade somewhere in there. And then you've got the additional $33,000 that we know is coming out for the billing. So I think we have to decide ultimately, is a tunnel grant something that we want to look at, the general fund obligation to look at? And that's why I wanted to give you the numbers earlier, and Councilman, I know you came in a few minutes afterwards, but that one sheet there to your right gives you what we currently have in reserves. So you can be brought up to speed on where we are at, get that down. So that's currently what we have in our reserve fund for Rose Creek. Those are the three major projects outside of just a normal operational budget. Those are going to be the ones that we're going to have to look for to basically pay for these projects if we want to move forward. The question's going to be, do we want the general fund to support or pay for the tunnel grant itself? The Rose Creek Project, is there anything, because ultimately, we just don't have enough reserve fund money or project, I call it reserve fund, Chance, we call it project money, basically set aside to complete these next three larger projects that we have slated out. And I think having to look at this, no one else is, go ahead, Chris, what was you going to say, I'm sorry.
Well, like the Rose Creek Project, you're talking about that could be as far as a year out, correct?
Within the year, I'd say, within, yeah, I'd say within this next spring to summertime year next year, we'd like to see.
Possibly, we're not looking at all this money out of this project. Well, depending on how far.
Well, Chance just jumped in, but I'd say that reserve's not going to change much between this year and next year.
We're not going to be adding money to reserves at the end of June 30th, 2021, so what the mayor's saying won't change. It's not like we're going to cover the surplus, but we'll have additional money.
Yeah, this year, I'm probably going to be, or will, I'll say aye, but we'll probably be okay when it comes to paying the additional Hardin County Water fee because of the fact that we've held the engineering slot and we've used QK4 as our kind of go-between right now to review some of our plats and stuff. Murray's worked with them right now on trying to be our engineer, so we'll have some savings in that, we'll probably offset that $33,000.
That's a very large increase.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what, yeah, the billing itself, total a year is going to be 82.5 for them to our billing. We've talked to two of our software companies who's trying to put the... Uh, we've talked to two of our software companies who's trying to put together something to give us. Uh, one is I-Works, which we currently have, they do have a utility fee, but as Chance and I spoke about last week, that doesn't cross over into what he currently has when it comes to, is it New World or, um?
It's, it's, it's bring, it's bring for KBS.
KBS.
Their second system, it's two different platforms. So it's just gonna take a little bit of time to figure out a way to either try to find a platform or the, or a potential utility billing system would tie into your general ledger. Um, I've also had, had talks with them about, well, the mayor may have mentioned once before.
I was just thinking that.
No, they can help.
Yeah, scrap one of these mics, they can't hear you off-screen, or just sit up there in the front, wherever you wanna go. Just sit up there in the front if you want to. That way you don't have to touch.
Yeah, because our, we currently don't have a, a utility billing system, um, because we've never really had a utility yet. You know, at the time that we got our current accounting system, which ties in payroll, accounting, our general ledger, fixed assets, basically everything we do, um, you know, we didn't, we weren't billing sewer bills and such, you know, as you all know, that's always been done by Hardin County Water. Um, and even when the sewer went away, they retained the billing for stormwater. Um, so we just don't currently have an active system where it's just an easy fix to roll it over. Um, not only do you have to have utility system, but then you have to tie it together to your accounting. Um, and what I was mentioning over here to the side is, you know, they're, um, the mayor, I think, may have mentioned as a possibility, and it's still something that, you know, requires a little bit of, um, work. And that is, you know, could you potentially bill, um, a stormwater fee for residential on your property tax bill? Which, of course, we do the billing for that, um, but then there, that provides some, uh, there's some issues with that, it just doesn't, um, you know, just to take the, the current monthly fee times twelve at sixty-eight dollars or whatever that fee is, and just bill it to the homeowner who gets the bill at that time is a little different than now where you bill monthly and, um, because property changes all the time, people buy and sell. So when you mail out the bill into October and it goes to a owner at that time, he may only have been living there for a month or two, what happens to the bill? Because that bill is based as of the owner January first of that year, well, you're billing ten months later and then you get into some issues about who had the property for how long in the first number of months. So there's some issues there that I don't know how the, right now, how that could be done. Uh, I know with Hardin County Water, um, you know, they, that fee is attached to whoever has, who is the owner as of that time. And if, as people come and go, water service gets turned off, it kind of ties back to the stormwater residential fee. So it's just something that has to be looked at, it's just not an, an easy fix. So I just wanted to mention that on the heels of what the mayor talked about, because it had been mentioned before in the past.
And they didn't address the commercial side that we've discussed neither, so. That's billed monthly, where they couldn't, some of, you know, some of them couldn't afford to pay at one time.
Yeah, the commercial side is not a flat rate, you know, it's based off the number of ERUs and your impervious surface, so, you know, you could, you couldn't really bill commercial, uh, one time a year because you could have some people paying an extremely high amount times twelve.
How old?
Sorry, Barbara, let me ask, Chris had, I interrupted Chris.
Have we got an estimate of what it costs for the billing stuff that you're talking about?
Yeah, um.
Well, for the billing, like if you, the, if you really.
Just a ballpark.
Are looking at getting a billing system, uh, well, you have two choices. One is you get a billing program that ties within to your existing software. But by doing that, then you're buying, um, a utility system that's blended to a soft piece of software that probably needs to be updated. Um, so I don't know if that would be the best use of funds. It may, it could potentially solve a problem short-term, but then you're buying something that is really aged to the existing software. You know, the bigger picture is the purchase of new software. Um, that obviously comes with a high price tag, there's been discussion, of course, I think we mentioned it, budget time between admin as well as the police department. Uh, a couple of departments that I know have talked about, uh, increasing and updating their software packages. Um, but at least with admin, I can't speak for police department, you know, there's so many working pieces between accounts payable and general ledger and the things that I mentioned that it just, it, it needs to be looked at, and, um, it's gonna take a little bit of time and it's also gonna take quite a bit of money. I mean, you're probably talking three hundred and fifty thousand at least for an accounting package, um, so it's just, you know.
Would that include all departments or would that just?
That would be probably just admin.
That's just a financial, yeah.
My understanding, currently, we're, we're patching each year your software, right? You were, you were.
You, okay, what do you mean by?
It seemed like I was told you was having issues with your software.
His computer, the, the system we do the printing on for the property taxes.
We have some issues with, I mean, we still, as you all know, we, we print out, um, uh, our own property tax bills. And we send them out, you know, as a mailer. Um, now that probably, uh, is gonna change for twenty twenty, um, because I've already been speaking with our software provider where, um, to get rid of some aged printers that print those ma, those mailers that we send out, uh, a lot of other jurisdictions print out single-sheet tax bills. Um, basically, it's a sheet of paper. And, you know, we, we have a tri-fold, um, uh, machine that we purchased last budget that Laura uses for business license renewals, where you can basically tri-fold, um, through a, through a printer, those single-sheet tax bills and you just mail them out. So that is my hope for twenty twenty, that we are able to convert to that. Now, that's just, that, we were able to potentially do that with the existing software. Um, and I've talked to them about, is there a way to combine potentially a flat fee for stormwater? Um, but then again, you, you, you run into some pro, uh, problematic issues about ownership at the time of billing and who receives it, so some of those things have to be worked out.
Uh, Chance, what's our, what, when did you come here when we got KBS? How long ago was it updated?
The piece of software that we have now, two thousand.
Yeah. Yes, it was twenty years. And back then, it was, how much did you tell me?
Um, yeah, I mean, it, it was over a hundred thousand then.
Yeah.
And when you say three hundred and fifty thousand for admin, the police department, fire department, what type of stuff would they need?
Well, I think Jamie, uh, you know, he has been getting software, uh, I think it's one of the pieces that the mayor mentioned earlier.
Firehouse software.
I think they are fine, um, I think, uh, the chief has said, from a software side, from what he does in his department, he is good, I think. But I have heard that Chief Cross has mentioned, uh, they have New World Systems, and I think they're, they're looking at a potential new platform to handle their dispatching.
Yeah, how much was it? Police.
Police is New World, Tim would know.
Yeah. Yeah. He's on, your software cost, uh, Tim just says about five hundred, I think, for an update, or for a new system, is that right? Yep.
Five hundred thousand.
Yeah. In the wrong business.
Why does it need new servers?
The servers, current servers are five hundred, I believe, or they are six. And New World, New World is phasing out the Florida version they have, because the new version require more resources on the servers to get them to work.
Can you, like, is it?
They need more memory and more storage space.
Right, what do we use now? What system do we know?
One last question, Chance. So we're talking about eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars for billing?
Now, some of that's already budgeted.
That's a total cost.
Forty-nine thousand five hundred.
Okay, total cost, but that's, we'll be paying eighty-two thousand five hundred.
July one of twen, yeah, July one of next year for the purpose of, for a full budget cycle, it'll be that figure, yes.
So what would a bond payment on eight hundred and fifty thousand cost?
It depends how long you amortize it out, what the rates are at the time, I mean.
Yeah, I mean.
Rates should be low.
Yeah, I, I'm just.
I mean, in order to afford, most likely, a, um, unless you just, in order to, to do a complete overhaul on both departments on software, and I think we did mention it at the work session at budget time.
Right.
Uh, you probably would need to bond that, and, uh, from a general obligation funding side, which is how these bonds are done, that you're supported with general obligation, uh, your city revenue, you, you would probably want, only want to do it for, you know, I don't know if they allow you to go more than five to seven. So, you know, you just, it's probably gonna cost you a hundred and twenty-five thousand a year on a bond payment if you do it over seven, eight years. Yeah, I mean, obviously, that's a council decision, the mayor talked about, uh, you know, what our reserve accounts are. There'll be some decisions, I guess, not only on this, but as it relates to those other items.
Where's the percentage we're at, what, what percentage of our budget is our reserve?
We're at four-three.
Yeah, we're over, I think, they, I think, it was a figure that the council came up with a couple of years ago, I think.
You know, in dollars, how much are we over?
Probably nine.
The lower limit?
Uh, we're above the limit, but I don't, I mean, I wasn't prepared to answer it, I didn't.
I think the high's about three-eight, and we're at four-point-two, so that's like, about four-hundred.
Yeah, we're four-three.
Right, yeah, so we could, we could go to that lower limit.
Yeah, if we went to.
And, um, save some of that bonding cost.
Yeah, I mean, that's a decision, of course, yeah, I mean, that's very possible.
I, I just can't see paying eighty-two thousand five hundred if we're, if we're truly looking at buying the software anyway.
Yeah, and there's some other things that we, we were considering in stormwater, um, the teeth that we have to go after it. Uh, Mr. Pike and I had discussed with Chance, of course, what the teeth are, when someone says they're not paying it, uh, on the stormwater billing side, Hardin County, when they shut your water off, unless you pay the bill, the water won't be, you can't turn back. So there's some things that we're trying to, to work through as far as, as that goes as well, so trying to figure out how we can make sure, and I think you looked it up and said it is an ordinance that that's suing, basically, but is that right?
And that we have a lien on the property, it's a, it's a statutory lien.
Yeah, so those are some of the things we're trying to work through and just seeing how we can afford to make the rights, do the right thing. But I, I wanted y'all to know, uh, but getting back to initial, I mean, um, what you're all thought in reference of the tunnel and the funding of the tunnel, um, and do we want to fund that tunnel out of storm, or out of, uh, our general fund, out of stormwater, or split it down the middle eighty-eighty? That, and then keep in mind, that doesn't count the cameras, the gates, or the lighting. Um, actually, I had those notes, what'd I do with those? Too many papers, too many papers, huh? Seventy thousand, eight fifty on the high end, um. Is there any thoughts on that, what y'all may think or consider or would like to do or? I mean.
The Rose Creek Project, we have, the Rose Creek Project, we have to do that because that's in correlation with the city of Vine Grove also, correct?
We're, um, so I met with the mayor, their engineer, along with our engineer and stormwater department guys, um, they are discussing that on what they're doing as far as stormwater utility fee, they're having a meeting next month. Uh, this also includes the, uh, Hardin County Schools, um, you know, this all started back probably two thousand, Mike helped me out, two thousand and eight, nine?
Many years.
Yeah, Donovan Smith was the mayor there, Sheila was the mayor here, and, um, they've had these discussions. Over the years, we have worked in our side to try to mitigate some of that. The last thing on our end is a basin that's gonna slow the water flow down, that's impeding onto the Rose Creek side. Um, this also has to do with Hardin County Schools capturing water that's coming off the top, that's running down. And then, of course, Vine Grove would have to fix whatever issues they've got on their side. So it's been a three-fold project, we're just now coming to the point after almost probably fifteen, eighteen years, um, to getting this thing wrapped up and done and trying to get everybody on the same page. Uh, I think it's gonna depend on what Vine Grove does on the stormwater side, whether or not they're gonna have the funds to actually fix their side, um, so, uh.
But I guess what I'm saying with that is, if the school board does their share and Vine Grove does their share, it's not gonna do anybody very much good or not gonna be as effective if we don't do our share. So we're pretty much have to, to do this one, whereas some of the others you could wait or postpone. I would think this would be top priority as far as something we have to do.
Yeah, I think if everything goes as planned, uh, I'd say probably by spring or summer, we'd probably look at starting some project work over there. Yeah.
As far as the tunnel goes, Mayor, I mean, you know, the council approved it back last year. We got a grant that was put out there that some other city may have gotten had we not got it. Um, so I think, you know, we asked for it, we got it, we need to fulfill what we said we was gonna do. Um, I understand there's been a little bit of changes in pricing, but, uh, I don't think that I would want to let fifty, sixty thousand dollars jeopardize, jeopardize future grants uh, if we end up making the state mad by not taking the grant that they gave us and all this work on their part's been put into it.
That else? Do you, yes, I can, I can. Yes, sir. How do you want to, I guess, fund it's kind of the thing I'm asking, I don't know how you all want to approach that or look at that. Um, high end, we know is gonna be at least one fifty-nine-nine, um, that's a twenty percent match, and that's at the cost that's there. Um. And we go, and of course, we go to bid, that number could come in lower, could come in a little higher, we don't know.
It could come in higher, so far, everything that that.
We just don't know.
That that has touched has been higher than anticipated, that's why we're having this discussion now. Is, it was, um, supposed to be quite a bit lower than this, and now it just keeps going and go, it's just snowballing. It started out as, uh, do we want to do a study to see, well, did we do a study on that one?
Uh, there was, there was a discussion about putting it in, and then they did the engineering on it.
They did the engineering to see how much that was gonna cost and everything, then it's like, okay, well, since we've done this, we need to do the next step and apply for the grant. Or we applied for the grant not knowing if we were gonna receive the grant. So it, it just keeps snowballing and becoming a bigger, bigger issue. I, personally, I don't think that is going to be the benefit for those monies as much as some of the other projects that are actually gonna control flooding and keep the water flowing for the safety of the citizens.
Chance, am I making a fair statement, just to make sure, because I want us to hear it out loud, I guess? We got three ninety-seven in reserve, three ninety-eight five in reserves, um, we typically don't have, the reason we had the money before is under Mayor Inyard, myself, Weaver, of course, many of y'all on the council, so I'm not saying all of us, we, we had set that money aside in anticipation of that large FEMA project down the basins. At this point, after spending that, we're at three ninety-eight five, there's not gonna be a lot of rollover going into that project dollars because that's just, back then, how we did it, is that?
Yeah, you just don't have enough, when you look at the expenses of the stormwater fund in relation to the money that, you know, you generate, there's just not enough money there to create some sort of an annual surplus that you can keep rolling over and increasing reserves like we did back then.
Yeah.
Um, I think we all had known and anticipated that once that Quiggin's project got done with our twenty percent match to over five million, um, that our reserve fund would be almost zero, well, it's not zero, it's at four hundred thousand. Some of that had to do with, because we were able to use in-house forces to build some of those basins, and we actually got reimbursed by our own labor um, in relation to contracting it out, that's the only reason we protected that reserve, and it's not zero already. Um, and just to keep in mind, what the mayor said, well, while we're discussing and you all contemplate the best use of the money, the hundred and four thousand is already in the budget for stormwater, that's the twenty percent match to the five hundred thousand for the tunnel. So we're not, I mean, I realize it's all potential money that we're gonna spend, just didn't want to be confused that we're looking at adding one fifty-nine to a decision. One, one oh-four is already in the budget, it's just the difference between the one oh-four and the one sixty.
Right, and that's why I said I didn't want to let fifty thousand dollars, you know. It, when you add it all together with the amount that the city, or that the council already said, we was gonna keep within a threshold in our reserve so that we're being responsible with the money, we're well over that, so we have the money, uh, to do all the projects with the money that's currently in stormwater and what's in our regular reserve fund. So I'm not suggesting that we put one over the other, I think that we could do them all.
That part, but the three ninety-eights, um, includes, doesn't include the?
The, the, the hundred and four is already in the budget, so it has nothing to do with the reserve.
Yeah.
The reserve would only be a, a decision-maker when you talk about the commitment to North Lockston and Rose Creek, the tunnel.
And that's why I was saying that four hundred thousand for North Lockston, I'd say we're two years at least out on that, um.
And that's why I say, I mean, there's going, hopefully, be more money, uh, available down the road too when we start that, I would think.
And then the one fifty, so that puts us at six hundred and fifty, that's why. That's why I was saying, you know, we're over, do we wanna, see, cause if you put the one oh-four back, that puts us up higher, but it still doesn't get us to where we wanna be at. So, that's why I was saying, do we, are we looking at, do we want the general fund to absorb any of those costs? Do we wanna just take it all out? I don't know.
I, I personally, I think Stormwater needs to stay Stormwater. Uh, I know we have that reserve fund, and at the time, I thought it was a little low. I still think it's a little low, and that was before COVID, where we're not getting the same kind of revenue, at the same stric- same streams of revenue. I mean, nobody had the foresight to think that the tourism industry's totally gone, the hotels are making nothing, um, occupational taxes, because people being laid off because of all this. We don't know what this is going to continue to look at. I mean, I think we're just at the beginning stages of that. From what I understand, it may last for several years, um, I hope it doesn't. But, but we don't know, so I would hate to take anything out of the general reserve fund for Stormwater. I just think we need that to safeguard.
Then there was no sense of us passing a budget, saying we was gonna stay within these percentages.
Yes, but I didn't agree with those percentages. I told you all, you're only got six months' worth of revenue in there. I mean, you can only got six months of expenses, or is it even three? I think it was three months. If everything shut down, so, I mean, to me, that's just not very safe, when you're figuring you've got police that we've gotta keep up, fire, and everything else.
You know, we, we, when we did this, we did this at the time, looking at research.
Hey, Ed, Ed, sorry, yeah.
We set that limit at the time, you know, looking at research and considering what was irresponsible in the sense of having a whole lot of money, and what was irresponsible in the sense of having too little money. And we kind of came within, within a range. Now, I, I do agree that nobody foresaw a hundred-year event, right? So, let's just keep it in context. It wasn't irresponsible to set that reserve. Yeah, yeah, I think the reserve was a very responsible thing, because when we did it, we looked at cities who were being irresponsible with taxpayers' dollars by having, you know, these coffers basically overflowing with money instead of doing the city's business. At the same time, it's irresponsible to be living paycheck to paycheck. Uh, and so, here we've been in a global pandemic for a few months, five, six months now, and we've not necessarily had to go to that reserve. So, we are doing something correct, in the sense that, um, we're still holding our own with all the things that have impacted us. I do think we need to use wisdom moving forward, uh, but at the same time, we need to consider, um, if we start reneging on, um, projects, you know, and not fulfilling our obligation to grants, and somebody did a competitive bidding process or grant process, we won. And we won in an environment that was different than this one, however, um, some city lost. And, um, even with the global pandemic, what does that affect us? Let's say the pandemic gets over in six months, and we reneged on a grant, and now, when we go to apply for a grant, uh, with the same agency, you know, that's kind of considered against us. That's one thing. So, I, I think that we, we should consider using the reserve for what is there for. At the same token, I think we use caution and not go beneath that range we set. Um, but I do agree, nobody could have foreseen, uh, that we would be in the middle of a global pandemic. Um, so, I think where we can apply caution, we should. I think another thing to consider is the mayor, uh, also indicated that, uh, some of these projects are maybe a year, two years off, um, which means things can change, um, and they can change for the better over that two-year period. So, and I, I, I'm, I'm inclined to, to agree with, uh, Chris, on the sense that, you know, there's, there's consequences to, to backing out of the grant. Um, and yeah, you're right, that's the likelihood that things may be higher than even now we anticipate. Um, but I don't, I don't think we should, um, rush to a decision to back out of a financial obligation that we, in good faith, we, um, applied for a grant, received that grant, and, you know, we always know with these contracts, things may come high, they may come low. And the mayor is, is also, you know, giving that caveat to his presentation, that there's a possibility that things could come in lower, so, um. So, I think if we can, if we can make all things work and stay within that threshold that we set for that, um, reserve, I think we should consider that.
And I think if you consider the cash on hand, so basically, four-hundred thousand rolled over from last year, four-twenty-five, I think you said. So, technically, if we put that into reserves, we got four-point-three, we're at four-point-seven million now, and on the high end of the percentage that we set, that's about three-point-eight. So, technically, we're about eight-hundred thousand over of the threshold that we set.
Yeah, I don't, Ed, probably, Ed, uh, Councilman, what he's talking, um, before you walked in, from the eights, from twenty-eighteen, when I came in, we were at three-seven-seven, three-point-seven million. Uh, then on your sheet, you should see we're at, um, four-point-two, and then in twenty, we're at almost four-point-three. And then, if you remember, our parking lot dollars that we were able to save through that budget, we had about, with the savings at the end of the year of that year, we were about two-ninety-nine, cash on hand. And then, in addition, between the savings we were able to have this year and some rollover, we were about four-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. So, that's not included into that general fund, or, excuse me, the reserve dollars, so that's what he's talking about.
So, actually, even through a pandemic, we come out four-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars, which I think is a good job on everybody's part.
Leadership. Sorry, Chris. But it is, i- i- it shows we're being very, um, appropriate with the money and, and, you know, if this was a business and we were running a business, that those would be good. But, it's like Councilman Palmer said, and, you know, Barbara and yourself, and Pam, I know you're shaking your head. It's a fair balance of where we need to be, where we should be, and where we need to spend dollars correctly. So, and that's really kind of, that's why I needed to, I mean, you all are, ultimately, you know, if we wanna move forward, the next step would be, um, I need to get with the grant folks, tell them to go ahead and move forward. Um, there's some things we are talking with KYTC on, uh, trying to get some dollars down. It's legitimately a difference between a thirty miles-an-hour switch-over lane and a thirty-five mile-an-hour switch-over lane.
Where, where are we at on the North Lockston part?
They're working, uh, they're in the middle of archaeological. So, that's, they're studying whether or not there's endangered species, bats, spiders, snakes, all that kind of stuff.
So, um, and you assessed, um, North Lockston, that area, and is that, is that an emergency? Is that something?
I've heard some.
You feel pressing?
I've heard different arguments since inquiring a lot harder.
Right.
Um, some of the sinkholes that are on that end of town are filling up, um, quicker, because that's why we're seeing some more open up on that end of town. Uh, I'm not saying that's the sole reason, but that's what engineering has shared. Um, really, it has to do with a lot more maintenance, I think, and cleaning, and lowering levels of areas of fill that have, or areas that retained water that have filled, and cleaning those out. Um, I think there's some places down there, especially off Timber, Timber, uh, Timberwood and Scenic, where we have that one, that bigger one that needs to be addressed and cleaned, opened up. Um, do we get a lot of calls? We get some, but, um, they have not completed the study yet, so I, I don't know the full scope of that study, um, and what engineering is. Now, I have, I did meet with Neil last week, um, and he, that's where, and Red Wing is our, the firm that's going through the inj- or the archaeological process. And told him that at some point here in the next few weeks, I'd like to get them in front of the council, so we can have kind of an update on where we at, cause typically, if we had an engineer, they would come in on a regular basis. And they said absolutely, just let them kind of know when. And so, the, the thought process behind it was finding out what happened with Vine Grove's vote, and then bringing them in here for an update, not only with Rose Creek, but, um, for North Lockston.
Where we at with the FEMA grant process, part of that process?
It's still, it's still moving forward. That's why they're in the archaeological. I think we paid out about tw- how much, twenty?
Um, the, the amount for North Lockston?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't remember the exact.
Yeah.
I know, you know, we're in obligation, but I don't know how much we paid out.
Yeah.
We paid out quite a bit.
So.
And to.
Part of that is still part of the.
Well, I'd say we're at least two years.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. Time you go through the FEMA process, yeah. Uh, that's me guessing.
It can be two years, can be later than that.
Yeah, the north, or of course, the FEMA, which was largest, five-point-one, this is about two-point-one. But that started under Sheila in probably two thousand nine, ten, went through me, and went through two, almost a year and a half of Weaver, two years of Weaver, so.
So, to, to Barbara's point earlier, when she was saying, you know, if Vine Grove does it, and Harden County Schools does it, then we need to do it. Is it something that all three have to be on board for the project to work, or? How's it gonna work if Harden County says, or Harden County Schools says we're not gonna do it, and Vine Grove says they're not gonna do it?
We're not there yet. We're, we're all pretty, um, Vine Grove's engineers working with the school system, um, to clean out the basin. Uh, I think they're working whatever details those are, we're not, I'm not in the middle of those, because that has to do with their engineering. It's on this Vine Grove side.
Right.
On our side, we wanna make sure that, at least for me, that I, that I've told them, we're gonna look at the engineering side. We'll see what we can do, which we've done some of that, that's some of the work that's been done on North Lockston. Um, the basin side to capture the water is to retain, I forgot how many acres it is, but is to slow the flow, so it's not, um, basically blowing that side out as it runs through.
Right.
You know, we'll, we'll get to that point where we're deciding, see where they're at, and, and move forward.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the project that we're gonna do is more so because of our water running on Vine Grove. It's not a, gonna really correct or help flooding
Correct.
in, in Radcliffe. We're just doing our, our part because of the water running out on Vine Grove.
And that's why before the project will move forward, or before we give the okay for our guys to do it, the councils will be briefed and updated. Uh, because once I get the final draft of engineering, then that's when I'll turn it over to you guys and let you all look at it. Cause ultimately, it'll be a decision we make. I mean, I won't spend it unless it's approved.
I mean, I think if we're discharging water over on Vine Grove and it's causing damage, then we, you know, need to do something about it, but if Vine Grove turns around and says we're not doing it, then that's gonna be, we're probably gonna back up and say, wait a minute then.
Yeah, our side.
Or at least I would.
Our side, and those that haven't been out to Rose Creek, we'll brief you on everything. I mean, it's, it's, it's a long, detailed story. Um, but we're not, our project won't restore what the people on Rose Creek are complaining about. That'll have to be happened by the city of Vine Grove.
Okay.
Yeah. And Pam's been very, Pam's called me quite often about trying to work through these issues and figure out how we're gonna make it happen, and there's been some talk about our guys, you know, um, uh, figuring out how all that has worked over the years, and they were saying, well, I mean, it's, she has, she's called me quite a bit, asking me about it, and I think Mike can probably attest to that, so.
Well, I hope we can get it corrected and, you know, work together, but Vine Grove's a great partner to work with. I just, you know, hope that their council
Yeah, but before we.
Do their part, and then, you know, we'll do ours.
We won't spend any of those extra dollars like that on the project until the council has a full briefing, so. Yeah, I wanna get it to you all first, before you see it on Facebook somewhere, and it's, nobody knows what we're talking about, so. So, next steps on the tunnel, um, is gonna be, I would get with our engineering firm to do the, um, to move forward on the bid process. We have to, uh, do a resolution, possibly, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, at the next meeting, for the additional match fund that I would send to Kim Thompson, requesting the additional amount for the seventy-four thousand. Remember, we talked about that the last meeting. Uh, and that would be a resolution from you all, that's showing that we're willing to commit those additional dollars, um.
Just to clarify, you're not talking about Councilman Thompson.
Kim Topkins.
It sounded like you said.
Yeah, it says Thompson, yeah. Um, but yeah, uh, that is the tap grant associate, so that's, that match of that seventy-four thousand additional request is fourteen-eight. Um, so, um, that would be the next step, and then after that, when that process is approved, it would go to bid, and then we would actually know probably what those true numbers would look like, uh, on the bid side, and then what our, our actual match would be, so. If that's what y'all wanna do, and then we can decide at that time, if you wanna take it out of reserves, if you wanna fund it straight out of Stormwater. Does that sound right, Chance?
Sounds familiar, yeah.
Yeah. So, Ed's good, Chris? I almost called you Barbara. Pam, Barbara. I'm just, I'm just taking a voice kinda, yeah, go ahead and move forward. Is that a yes, is that a no? Pam, where you at? You got anything? She's six foot away from it, she can't hurt you. I know, I know. I was just, I was just teasing. Ed had to sit by her for a little while, so it's. All right, so, um, with that, I'll turn it over to you guys. Chris, you got anything? I'll start on your side.
No, sir.
Councilman Palmer, sir, you got anything? That's woman. Barbara, all right.
But I will say that my father, you know, uh, you know, he was.
Hey, hey, Councilman.
He was the right to change my mind once he get those final numbers in. So, I haven't abandoned you totally.
All right, so our next meeting will be, um, on the eighteenth, that is, uh, at six-thirty here. Um, I don't think we have anything between now and then. If I hear anything different between now and then, I'll, I'll, you know, try to let you guys know, but, um, I'll move forward with that. I wanna thank Councilman Yeha- you miss it? You miss sitting in here, these arguments and?
Yeah, I'm a fan of it.
Yeah, well, anytime you wanna come up here and sit in this chair, I'll, I'll come over and sit for a couple of minutes.
A lot of the things you talked about, I already can't read.
All right, well, thank you for coming to visit us, Donnie. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Yeah, um, all right, if there's anything else, I guess we're adjourned. Thank you all.